Like Paul's work and it works on the needs of the principal chair support. I would ask you to be honorable. Tomson, hi, or Pam?
Here.
Roy?
Here.
Daniel?
Here.
Ellison?
Here.
Neemaster?
Here.
All right, thank you. We'll move right into our first discussion, item B1, the 2024-25 and 25-26 calendar update. Dr. Gillespie.
Evening Chair Ellison, members of the board. I always get to talk about life and both.
Rana?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Good evening Chair Ellison, members of the board. I always get to talk about life quite a few years in advance. So I tonight will talk really about an overview of where we are in the calendar process for the 24-25, 25-26 calendar updates with the intention of bringing both of those calendars to you at the next school board meeting or asking for your approval of them. So I wanted to kind of remind you of where we are in the calendar process and how the calendar process has evolved since I have had this as part of my duties as assigned. So policy 602 guides our process. The current district parameters and practices that we're using are that the academic calendar with key dates, so you may think of that as a little bit of a skeleton calendar, is proposed as the school board two school years in advance. For example, this year we'll be looking at the 25-26 calendar. The detailed and final academic calendar comes one school year in advance. So we'll be finalizing 24 and 25. We implemented a new parameter starting for this school year, 23-24, in that we won't have any more school days that are solely elementary days off. We used to have one school day during the school year that was solely our elementary families off because of our format for welcome back school conferences. And we've done some work with our calendar committee with our educator union president and some leaders there on how we can still have a welcome back conferences, but also have our educators, elementary educators have some time during workshop week to make sure that they also have the professional development that they need to make sure the school year is off and running. And it went well this year. And so really feeling strongly that any school day that we would have off during the school year would encompass all of our elementary and secondary students to be responsive of our family needs and make sure that there's enough care at home as much as we can. And then really wanting to work with our calendar committee to get some more detailed parameters that would be inclusive of the ones I just mentioned. But we also have really leaned into just some other things that I think is important that we write down so that we understand how are we reviewing the calendar? As you know, I've had to bring the calendar to you quite a bit over the past few years for a lot of really legitimate reasons. But we have a lot of people who have a lot of vested interest just to make sure our system runs well around the calendar. So who reviews it? Why do they review it? How do we select dates? Spring break, you know, has been pretty consistent. We moved it. What would make us choose to move that? Where are we placing professional development days? So really getting some of those parameters written down. And there has been a historical document that hasn't been updated in a while. So looking back at what the calendar committee had prior to me and then revising that. So I will bring that just to make sure it aligns with what you would want us to have as the school board as we continue to lean into that. So what I want to talk about is we did bring our, the 24-25 calendar with key dates. And usually key dates are any of the breaks that we were pretty confident in that won't change, first days of school, last days of school, spring break. A lot of families really want to know that those extended breaks for families. And so one change that as we continue to work on what it looks like as we open the 912 campus and I partner with Russ Reitz, our high school principal, is looking at for one year, how do we onboard the ninth and 12th graders, knowing that people are coming together in one school? And so what I'm going to bring to the calendar committee and have talked briefly with some of the leaders about is looking at the first days of school differently for our high school. And so what that will look like and what we're hoping that will look like is nine, or Tuesday, the third, which Labor Day is early this next school year, it would be sixth grade and 12th grade. And if you remember that we did some onboarding with and changed the calendar so just sixth grade and ninth grade where those big transition years have been the past two school years, those first days. And so we would change that to have sixth grade and 12th grade. Mr. Reitz would work with some student leaders to really decide what does that 12th grade onboarding look like? Leadership day is really thinking about how do we set the culture in the 912 building and their leadership is really key. And so more details on what that will look like as he works with the students around that. Then Wednesday would be the first day for first through fifth grade and then seventh through ninth grade. So essentially, all middle school students would attend school. 12th grade would not be in school so that ninth graders can then still have that onboarding with the Link Crew. We have a lot of our 10th, our 12th graders who serve in leadership roles with Link Crew. So they would be there, but we still would have a sole ninth grade day as we think about opening the 912 building. And then Thursday, we would have, it would be the first day for kindergarten, first grade through 10th, 10th and 11th. And then we would essentially have, that would be all of our kids in school, K12. We will figure out how to communicate that so that people understand. There will be lots of communication. We are working really closely with Mr. Reitz and he's working with his leadership team around other activities, thinking about how do we make sure families and students have multiple touch points as we open up the 912 building? What will be stuff that's there every single year? And then what is something special for this inaugural year? And so we don't anticipate that 12th grade every year would have this. This really is about culture setting and thinking about opening a brand new school year, or a brand new school in terms of the 912 unification. The other piece that's different for us is we're returning back to 171 instructional days, which has been what is part of our teacher contract. We've done that for every other school year except for the past two school years. And if you remember, we changed some days to professional development to support the letters implementation, which our teachers have worked really hard and a majority of our teachers will complete that professional development. We also were able to do a lot of professional development around the unification of the high school, looking at what we're doing with standards based learning for middle school. But next year would be a return back to 171 instructional days. And so those are the two big things we're looking at with 24-25. We also have a lot of the detailed days to place. So where would we put professional development days? Making sure that we got, we have all of the days counted correctly. You would have no idea how hard it is and how many people I have to have look at it to make sure we don't miss a day or get something wrong, which would cause us to bring it back to you. So that's the 24-25 calendar. Then 25-26, really, we have a lot of conversations to have. And so that would be the calendar that we would bring to with just key dates, more of the skeleton calendar. What I'm intending to bring to the calendar committee is a return back to what we've kind of deemed our normal onboarding. The first day of school, sixth and ninth grade would start. Then we would have essentially the Wednesday, first through 12th grader in school. And then Thursday would be kindergarteners. We are really wanting to dive into what are we doing for kindergarten onboarding? There's a lot that starts in August. Our educators are working closely with families. Things have changed in terms of the assessments we're doing. We are doing assessments, but making sure that, you know, when, as we're partnering with families, what does that look like? And so that we're communicating with families on what we're doing for kindergarten onboarding. And then key conversations we have to have are the length of winter break. The holidays fall interestingly in that year. And so it looks like possibly we would for sure need a two week break, which is exciting. But then that extends when the last day of school is in June, which you always have to have that conversation. And so almost always people would not want to go to school till June 12th. And I'm not saying that that's the exact date, but it is a weird year in terms of calendar. So those will be conversations that we have with the, with the calendar committee. And then we'll do as many breaks that we're confident with so that we can communicate those ahead of time for families. But we don't want to go back and forth and have to redo calendars. And so that would be what we bring to you. So it will be more of that skeleton calendar with some key dates. And then we'll work together internally and bring a detailed calendar early next year again at this time for 25-26. So I will meet with the calendar committee. We're meeting this Wednesday and then we scheduled another meeting. We, this committee has become really high functioning. I'm proud of the partnership that we have. We have teacher leaders, building leaders. We do a lot of conversation throughout the year. And so what are our issues that can actually be solved to make sure that the calendar is addressing those and then other barriers that buildings are seeing? How we partner with building leaders, teacher leaders to make sure we're meeting the needs at each one of our building levels to make sure the calendar is supportive? But there are other things that we can do across our system. And so we will determine the finalized details of 24-25 and then again, those key dates for 25-26. And then I will be here November 13th with finalized documents for both of those, asking for your approval. Great, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Gillespie? Ms. Daniels?
We've got my raise to notice, but what if the state requires for the number of days a year, not the same in elementary?
We do meet them and we exceed them. It's actually hours that they require and it's secondary is 1,020 hours that leaves and we exceed those by multiple days. And then elementary, I can't rattle them off my head for the number of days, but I would have known them last year because we had so many snow days, but we are well beyond those days and both of them. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other questions? Well, next fall, I will have one child in each of those starting blocks, Dr. Gillespie. So I would be very interested to see how the communication to families roll out, so. We are excited. I will have many people helping me figure that out, yeah. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. We will move on to our discussion item B2, building our future referendum projects update. Dr. Kozmcek?
All right, thank you Chair Ellison. We have several guests with us tonight. Paula Kukowski, Tyler Earl, and EJ Vlontzve. We're going to run through an update on Sunrise, the Sunrise design, the typical construction updates which we come to enjoy on a frequent basis. And then also a bit of a preview on Ed Spaces conference that some of us are attending and Paul's going to talk a little bit about what that is. And then there'll be time for questions. So Paul, are you going to kick it off?
All right, thank you very much for having us tonight. We're here today to give you an update on the Sunrise Park design as we have for all of the other projects in the, in the district. So excited to show you that project. EJ is going to give one of his whiz-mang laser light show tours of the construction process. He always upstages us, but that's okay. And then we'll talk about Ed Spaces. So for Sunrise Park, as with all the projects in the district, we like to have what we call a concept for the project. It's kind of that thing that we overlay on the functional design of the building that kind of gives it some extra meaning and helps guide us in the selection of materials and things like that. For the Sunrise project, because it's a multi-programmed building, we picked a kind of a concept that's a little bit more neutral. We chose to kind of invest in the idea of the Sunrise Park name. It's actually the name of the neighborhood that the building is in. I don't know what the like of the name of that building is Sunrise Park will be, but as you'll see in the design, it's really kind of a neutral theme. It doesn't really stand out that much in terms of needing to be sunrise. What we're really keyed off is the idea of light. And there were some things that invested us in that, the idea of new beginnings for early childhood and those kinds of things. So we'll show you a little bit about how we applied that in the building. Like all of the projects, there was a lot of user input. And again, this was a little bit of a unique building because there's so many different programs there. So we had a core group that consisted of the administrators or the cabinet essentially for their programs. And then we had subgroups with all the different programs. So they got all the same kind of input that all the other projects in the district did. And as always, we developed these criteria with them and those are in your packet. I won't take time to read them right now. So then this is our overall building diagram. And as Paul alluded to, there are a lot of wonderful programs that are going to be housed in this building. So the, I'll start kind of on the left, work our way to the right as you see on the screen here. But we really wanted to create a main entrance to this building for visitors. There are a lot of people that come to visit the district office for enrollment for various other functions. And so it needs to be a clear, you know, a new family coming in to get registered that need to know where they're going. And so creating a main entrance, a welcome center that we, is a term that we've been using throughout this project. And so that's the arrow on the left hand side that'll come right off of the parking lot. From there, you'll move right into a secure entry where you'd be greeted by folks there that can help guide you to your destination. We also have adult education in the senior center on the north end side of that main hallway. And then really the building is broken down from then on into kind of the public areas that are going to be serving a lot of visitors, you know, the boardroom, like the spot that we're sitting today, but has a lot of public access to it. So those things along with the gym are kind of on the north half of the plan. And then on the south half of the plan, we have the district office departments in green there. So they're kind of taking off that first leg of the building. The orange color is all of the early childhood. So the main office and entry point will actually be on the south side of that building with a drop off area for parents to be able to park their vehicle, bring their student into the building, have kind of a family commons, which you'll see as we step through some of the images. And then classroom spaces going up the two wings of the building. And then the other big program at this building will be the Transitions Education Center, the TEC. So they will also have kind of a separate entrance. Each, each function will have a security checkpoint, all of those, those good things that can identify their own program within this larger context, but really, as Paul alluded to, we tried to overlay a lot of our design concepts throughout the entire building. And then when we looked at those qualities of light, one of the themes that came up a lot in the design of the building was collaboration, collaboration between not only all the programs that are in there, but also within the programs like in the district office. And we looked at light as kind of an inspiration for that. And what we've set up is the idea that there's kind of different settings in the building that have slightly different qualities of light. There's inactive, so it's kind of more bright and evenly lit places that are great places for large groups and more active things. The idea of teeming, which really comes to more of a focused light that happens in conference rooms, some of the open conferencing areas in the building. And then focused, so like in the offices, we're giving them kind of a softer, more diffused light with task lighting. So again, that theme that kind of resonates throughout the whole building. And then some of those pictures, you see the idea of those dappled light things that happen with shadows and lights like that. That informs some of the patterns that we're using in the building. So then this plan is an abstraction of those ideas and how we applied those. So the, the orange color is more of those active, the boardroom, the gym, you know, higher collaborative areas. From there, the, it's kind of hard to see on the screen, but there's a hatch pattern over some of those teeming areas. So that's where a lot of the collaboration is going to happen. The early childhood classrooms, some of the flex learning areas that we've adapted into the district office. And then as Paul alluded to, the gray is more of those focused office spaces that, that you can see throughout the plan there. And these are some examples of materials that we've been working on with a lot of the stakeholders involved in it. We do have a consistent palette across the building, so it looks like it all belongs together. But we will be sort of accenting different colors and textures for the different programs. So they have a little bit of their own identity too. So now we have some fun renderings to share with you all today. So this has been kind of the culmination of a lot of efforts from both the core planning group, the steering committee, but also a lot of the user groups that we met with along the way have provided input to, to get us to this point today. So again, this is the, the main entrance to the district service center. This is that main area where any visitor's coming for enrollment or community, either of those things are going to come to this door. So providing some signage and updated canopies so that way kind of calls to light that entry sequence. Then this is the drop off loop off of Cedar for early childhood. So again, we're using similar language on the canopies, updated signage. This is a closer up of that. And then again, similarly at the other entrance for the TEC, trying to recreate that language in a very similar way, using exterior lighting to kind of invoke some of those sunrise motifs that we're using in our design. So stepping into the building, so now we're at the welcome center. And so we've created a warm welcoming utilizing school colors as people are brought into the building here. Then from there, they'd be moving out into the rest of the building once they've checked in, gone through the security checkpoints and things. Another portion of this project is updating toilet rooms very similarly that we've done throughout the other buildings and projects. This is a view of the district office hallway. So the steering committee, but also the core planning group for this project, wanted to incorporate a lot of the design elements that we've been incorporating in the projects throughout the district. They, they thought that we should be bringing the same collaborative ideas that we've been asking our staff and our students to think about into, into our building. And so we tried to create little breakout areas. So as you can see, there's a little bench area. As we continue moving forward, there's lots of glass and visibility and transparency between departments and office spaces and conference rooms. This is an example of, of a collaborative work area outside of the teaching and learning area and equity departments. And so those two departments are one that they work really closely together. And so they suggested some openness between their departments so that way they can collaborative, collaboratively work with one another. This is a view of just across the hall from where we were just looking at the equity. So again, very open to the hallway, that way they can work together. This is a view of how we're changing the light in office spaces. So it's a little bit more diffused, a little, a little more focused. There'll be some task lighting and things that we take advantage of and then utilizing natural daylight when we can. This is that family commons that I alluded to. So once parents have stepped into the, into the main office area and reception area of early childhood, then there's this existing hallway at Sunrise Park that seemed like a great opportunity to do something with. And so we decided to utilize some furniture, but also bring some of that language from the district office into this area to create a seating location. There's also the handoff between parents and teachers, having a little bit of space and breathing room for those activities to take place. So that's kind of the, the purpose of this area. Another shot of that. And Sunrise Park has the beautiful courtyards that bring a lot of natural light into that building too. So we're, we're taking advantage of that every chance we can. This is a shot looking down the early childhood hallways or one of the, one of the two hallways. And so we're actually removing the lockers that suit middle schoolers very well, but introducing some different coat hooks for early childhood students and then creating some pinup space for announcements or student artwork to be displayed above that. This is a view of the TEC. So one of the components there is kind of a life skills kitchenette area and messy lab space. And so that's the kind of the center portion of this. There are classroom spaces and offices kind of surrounding that main circulation area. But that, that is going to be a very exciting space for those students. Part of the goal of a building for that program is to make it feel not as much like a school and more like a professional environment. And so we're trying to create a different atmosphere for that program. This view is the proposed boardroom and what that's going to look like. So the setting is, in this image is set up for a typical board meeting. So you can see that there'll be, you know, a day is for the school board to sit up. We're utilizing some branding and working with Marissa and her team to figure out what exactly that looks like. And then utilizing some wood paneling and the ceiling bringing down the wall just to kind of frame that space for the school board meetings. There'll be some storage and some patrol rooms and also some conferencing space off of that as well. Another zoomed in view of that, so as we move a little bit closer to that, utilizing lighting in a unique way in this distance as well. And part of the plan for that room is to make it really flexible. So we're trying to create a nice dignified setting for the board to happen, but all of that furniture is portable so it can be cleared out and used as a multi-purpose room for other things, kind of like you do for this room without the stage built in. Then directly across the hall, this is actually the old band room that we're planning to level out the floor and take advantage of that space as a larger training area. So there are a lot of professional development meetings. There's, there's always a shortage of conference room space and things like that. And, and so this was a great opportunity to take advantage of a, of a larger room, create some larger training spaces. There's some smaller conference rooms, some rooms that will be set up for Zoom and video conferencing and things like that. So there's a lot of great spaces to take advantage of here. And then the last couple of images here are just, we're doing, planning to do some refreshing of the existing gymnasium there. Currently, the plan is to use that space for gymnastics. And so there'll be, there's an opportunity just to brighten things up with some new paints, some new acoustic panels, some district branding to make that space feel nice and dignified for those athletes to be able to use in other community and functions throughout the school year. Just a couple of views of that. And then we could pause for any questions about that design and then we'll move into construction update.
Any questions for the team? We'll start with Dr. Neemaster and then Ms. Daniels.
I want to compliment you again on your fun presentation. I look at it often on the website to see what's updated and what isn't. And you've got a lot of things to put into Sunrise. I guess I just wonder, as a member of the growing demographic of senior adults that live in this district, I don't really see the use of the senior center yet reflected in any of your pictures. And I also wonder, the senior program serves a wide variety of activities. Hundreds of people every week go there to play games, do crafts. They've got the dance center next door. They can do yoga, they can dance. And, you know, just a wide variety of things. And in addition to what they do inside the busy center, they also have these cool community events they've developed outside in the parking lot. So they do things inside and outside seasonally as well as the cool programs and things like that that are administered through there with amazing extra work by the group. So I'm just wondering, besides, as I talk about outside, the parking lot at Normandy has sufficient parking for handicapped and seniors. It's a short walk. It's a canopy way to go in, depending which direction you come from, and it feels fairly safe. I'm familiar with Sunrise. My kids have been through there. I've been there many times. And it doesn't look like the end of it has changed. That same general place is where you're looking at, the senior center people going in. And I'm really concerned about safety in the parking lot and the number, I mean, huge number of handicapped and senior signage because there's lots of people there daily. I mean, I know if we want to have a meeting, the only time there's, that there's any space open is on a Friday morning. So they're used. And I am concerned. I'm wondering about the square footage of what's there and the square footage of Normandy. When you also consider the other spaces they use at, say, the dance center. I don't see a gym available to them for those kind of activities. So I, I guess I'm just a little bit concerned. Normandy Park has been a really good place. I realize a lot of people think it's, you know, got its issues in the past, it's been worked on, but it gives space and opportunity and safe access. So this maybe just isn't developed enough for me to see it there. But those are some of the questions I have. And the last parking lot event, that was a flea market that I participated in. And so all the people come and a humongous crap stuff that people turn out and store and work on. I'm not sure where that would fit here. We had people walking up from the neighborhood, biking through. I mean, it's really a gateway to the things down there. So don't forget. And I'm not sure how you make space for that.
Sure, certainly the program is not forgotten. I think we just didn't happen to put any renderings of it in here. We've met with that group as many times as anybody and gone back and forth on the design with them many times. So they're getting all of the same capacity and facilities that they have in Normandy now. We have had quite a long discussions about how they get in the building and where their door is. That is part of why they're right up at the front of the building so that it's easy to get in. We're still working through the parking requirements with the city, so we'll be working on that. The topic of designated parking spots for them has come up. I don't think the steering committee's made any final decisions about how we're going to assign certain spots, but it's certainly a known thing that we're working on. And then I would say in terms of kind of the way that they can use Normandy, this building is going to give so many more possibilities for that. There are, there is gym space. There's both the kind of the playroom that's designated primarily for early childhood. And then there's parts of the gymnastics gym that can be used by other people too. The part that doesn't have the equipment set up. And so, so that has a possibility. And then that main hallway in the building is actually a lot of square footage and it's actually one of the nicest spots in the building because it's got those big windows looking out.
Got a room to set up. They got a room to set up dozen card tables for all the people that come every day to play cards.
I'm sorry, what was it?
They need a dozen, I don't know, you'd have to ask the people that are there, but I know when I go in, there's just empty people having book clubs and card games and sometimes doing puzzles. And, and kind of random different shaped tables around might not suit their needs.
And all of those things we have facilitated within their, their own square footage. I'm just suggesting that when, when they want to stretch out and do other things, there's a lot of them.
And the square footage, do you have any idea how it compares? And everybody knows we're squashed at Normandy, but once E C I B let them in my room.
Yeah, they are, I don't remember the exact square footage. So it's, their actual designated square footage is a little bit bigger. Plus there's right around the corner from them, there's a boardroom, this conferencing center and other conference areas in there. So there's going to be a lot more opportunity for them to stretch out.
So they'll be able to schedule?
What was that?
So you'd be able to schedule other places regularly within the building?
Yeah, and in most districts, completely at schedule for it. So they have a, an avenue into that.
Yeah, I haven't seen margin all of our meetings. A lot, a lot of the things that John and Michelle have represented, the voice of our seniors in there have been really well heard and understood with the team and through the planning process. And I think not only the fact that they've listened to that and have made adjustments to make sure that we have what we need and what we currently have plus some more. And then we also, on the flip side, and our responsibility too, is also looking at, we have to look to use spaces differently too. So, you know, not only what half the space we have now, but like Paul just mentioned, across the hall in the boardroom, those other conference rooms areas, which will be more versatile spaces that we can also use for different things. So, yeah, they've been very receptive to our needs and, yeah, and there's, could be some things that work really well. There could be some things that we just need to adjust and do different, but yeah.
I just had a lot of people come and talk about it.
Yeah.
Because they're anticipating and kind of worried.
Yeah, well, I mean, change can be scary. Change can be scary, right? And I think that one thing we need to be open to is that change also creates a lot of opportunity for us. So, yeah, we're, we're excited.
Thanks.
Ms. Daniels?
Yeah, I just wondered if you, if you access one program, so students that come into the tech program, for example, are 18 to 22 year olds, will they be secure? Are they secure from the other programs? Like they couldn't or wouldn't necessarily enter early childhood, whether the senior program or something like that? So there's a checkpoint between programs? And they might want to access those programs because they might do some collaboration, but just wondering what the security is within the building?
Yeah, generally speaking, there's door, locked doors separating each of the programs.
Okay.
There are some plans to shift for shared use. So the, for instance, the lunchroom will be used for lunch.
Yeah.
And T E C will have the option to go in there and use that as, and early childhood will, as well as the district office will be sharing that space, so.
They just have to have key, they have to be with somebody that has key.
Right, right. There'll be control.
And then on that, I think it's the east side entrance where the tech is, they'll be dropping students off on that, there's a street out there. I taught there a while ago. Will there be parking on that side too? Are you going to add some parking like to the north of the building or where will those people that drive the teachers and maybe even some students would drive?
Again, we're still working over the city, the final requirements for parking. But generally speaking, we think that you will designate the northeast corner of the parking lot back there for the T E C program.
Okay, so it runs across the whole north side of the building there?
The one that's there now.
There now, right. So you're not necessarily adding any, but you'll just designate?
We're not planning to add any right as of right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions that work in?
I was just curious when construction plans on starting Sunrise? And then when do you, I know you can't say for sure, but when do you anticipate it to finish compared to the district offices here being a little, and this being, you got to remember the other most.
Right now, we have it scheduled for starting in July of next year. And then the project is going to be, there's going to be multiple phases through each of those locations that run into December of '25.
Ms. Councilor?
I had a question, but I think you may have got an answer. The gym is going to be a multi-use space, so like the T E C program will have access to the gym. Because I, I know that they use, or they try to do activities with the students. They don't have a gym space up the building there currently, but when the weather is nice, they try to get them outside, play basketball. I think there's a hoop in the back. But they were all very excited about the prospect of a gym. So even though it's a gymnastics space, you said there, there will be space in there that other programs will be able to utilize without.
That's a highly debating topic that I'm not going to get too deep into. I'll, I'll let the administration answer some of that. It depends on how you choose to assign space. It is being fitted out as a gymnastics gym. There is flat floor space in there that can be used, but it's not being maintained as a conventional gym. It's with a whole basketball court and all that. So it's a matter of how you schedule it and where they can get in there for different.
We did try to set it up that a lot of the heavy fixed gymnastics equipment can be biased to one side of the gym. That way it frees up more space, especially outside of the gymnastics season. But certainly those are some conversations that will have to take place.
Could they could maybe even access the early childhood gym space if it's not being utilized? And, you know, y'all have to work on those.
We also talked to Paramount about the cafeteria space has a lot of flat floor space depending on the activities, if something's going to happen.
And then you have a kitchen space in there for them. That's great. I also noticed in the courtyard, one is designated as an adult outdoor area. Is that for the seniors to use or like what is adult outdoor? Is that, I know some of the tech students there technically considered adults, like who's utilizing the different courtyards?
We're not really doing anything to customize the space to that as, as much. The thinking of the program, so you could use them for whatever you want going forward as things change. But the concept is that one of them will be primarily for the early childhood programs to use and the other one won't.
And then there'll be like the outdoor, currently it's a middle school. I guess I don't know Sunrise that well. I apologize, but is there playground equipment there? Is there a plan for playgrounds?
Yeah, it's being added.
Okay. And then with the playground equipment, are we're obviously hopefully going to have equipment there that the tech students would be able to use with the vast differences of their different disabilities that some of them have? Will we have special playground equipment for, you know, swings and stuff that are able to be used by all students?
Within the T E C program, there's certainly all of those facilities. To my knowledge, there's no plan to create an outdoor structure for them.
But they would have access to the outdoor playground, maybe?
There's tons of green space out there. Honestly, the playground equipment hasn't been purchased yet.
I know that there was talk, like I interned there for a little bit as a social worker and that was one of the big things that they were looking for, weren't you? Students themselves was to have like places to go outside and have time to, you know, have fun.
And there's lots of green space. And again, the courtyards aren't available. So for that.
Right, Dr. Neemester?
Thank you. That made me think, when you think of the kids at tech and the elders, the green spaces, you know what they are, I've seen them many times. Are you doing anything with them to make them handicapped accessible friendly? Because people at tech as well as older might want to walk and they're not going to try and walk on the green spaces, just grass. Is there going to be anything in there that you're dealing with or that's for the future?
We haven't planned to do it for this in the deals. We did talk about that a little bit, the idea of adding a path, but it's currently not included in the.
The, the courtyard that was designated more for adults to be using, there are some concrete patios that are out in that space that would be right on grade for any wheelchair or accessibility access. Those are there today and in pretty good shape.
But there's no big plan spring?
Great, thank you. Keep going.
All right. What's under construction? So hit you with some numbers first. So up there we have A L C Phase Three at 95%. Outer Lake Elementary, 99%. The high school, 85%. Onika, 96%. Central Middle School at 3%. And then we got South Campus, L T F M and Sunrise for the upcoming at zero. So again, that's based on the billings, so that's always tracking. Some of you guys might be like, we're done with A L C and Outer Lake. But that's, that's why that percentage isn't 100 yet. So we'll jump right in here. So first up is South Campus Ball Field. We started that May 1st of this year. Wrapped that up August 4th of the same year. Couple highlights from that project was demolition of the old hockey rinks and lighting, 200,000 square feet of new baseball field in preparations for new hockey rink, storage areas and associated site restoration. Had 1,000 linear feet of new walking path, new lighting dugouts and fencing and 679 million 836,000 blades of new grass, all hand placed.
I'm going to need your case.
And then do I do anything for full screen or?
I would recommend that you would, that you should.
Hit down one more. Up next, we have the A L C, which was kind of the Phase Three, the L T F M portions of the, the project here. We started that June 5th of this summer, wrapped that up August 31st. Couple of the highlights from that project was an overhaul of the existing mechanical piping and equipment, all within the tunnels, classrooms and hallways, as well as some of the above ceiling spaces there. So that's going to be including with some new air conditioning and some new heat for the building. We did renovations to the restrooms on the main and upper level. 53 new windows around the whole building exterior, as well as a new monument sign. And that would require about three bottles of Windex just to clean the outside. I think I buy like one bottle of Windex like every year, if that. And the new air handling unit has the capacity to move as much cubic feet of air as 20 All right, up next is Onika Elementary. So we had the start date September 12th of 2022, wrapped that up September 1st of this year. So the project highlights there, it was an 8,000 square foot storm shelter which housed five classrooms. And it came in at a frame weight, what I mean by that is all the concrete that went into that storm shelter of approximately 6,836 pounds, million pounds. So that's equivalent to about 1,139 blocks from the Pyramid of Giza. Updated classrooms, media center, lockers and safety and security systems, along with some site improvements that include a new sidewalks, plantings, filtration basin, and that was capable of filtering 58,411 gallons of groundwater every day. So that's enough to filter the same amount of water that an average household would use in five months. Didn't have an interior capture, so I owe everybody some interior photos at some point. Up next, we have the high school. So if you can remember way back, but we started construction June 15th of 2021 there with the final completion there in November 24. So in some capacity, we have completed or are underway with all aspects of the 10 phases of this project. So that's 595,287 square feet worth of additions and renovations, over half a million. That is enough cubic feet of space to store approximately 190 million 491,840 books, depending upon your things, I suppose. So some of the areas currently under construction, which is a lot of them, area P and Q, which is the kitchen and athletics renovations, they've got equipment going in, mechanical electrical plumbing hookups. And the concessions area, they got tile complete and they're working on equipment moving in there as well. They're installing tile in the lower level corridor walls, as well as the locker room showers with the lockers to follow shortly. They've got framing for soffits, gypsum ceilings and interior storefront, ceiling grid in the lower level, painting, carpet, rubber flooring throughout. I'm going to try to rattle through this because it's a long list of things happening up there. Area G and H and the classroom renovation areas, they got mechanical electrical plumbing rough ins throughout, piping up to the air handlers up on the roof for the chilled waters, as well as infilling C M U openings for classrooms, doors and windows. Area A and E, which is the union in the office, if you've been inside the union, it's the other side of that union. And then going back through the old main entrance. Fire sprinkler rough in, installing exterior curtain wall at the clear story, as well as chipboard walls inside that union space. Area V and C, which is the auditorium and music classroom addition portion, they're installing the steel catwalk in the auditorium, as well as mechanical, mechanical electrical plumbing rough in. And then they're finishing the roofing and smoke hatch installation in that area. Area D, which is the existing music area, they've got plumbing underground and they're working on pouring back the concrete ramps and the new risers in that area as well. Got a couple of interior shots with the auditorium and the music space. On the site, completed over 12 acres worth of turf fields now. On the site, completed over 12 acres worth of turf fields now. So lots of, lots of space for activities out there. But almost all of the 62 trade partners, so that's everybody that's been hired for some form of work on this project, just about every single one of them is onsite at this point. It's, and there's probably only a handful, a literal handful of folks that aren't onsite. So that's a daily average, about 98 hands-on installers and craft people amounting to just shy of three-quarters of a million hours' work. But to put that in a different perspective, if two people built this building, it would only take them 163 years. And then this is the new music spaces inside the auditorium slash music space additions. I can't remember if this is specifically banned or acquired. Inside the existing banned areas, you can see the new risers pouring in there. And then that's the old media center, it's a little different now. Good shot of all 82 feet.
Say 82?
82 feet. And if you're wondering, no, the buses are not pulling into the parking lots that fast. The drone video had to be sped up because otherwise it takes a long time to get that footage. Up next, we have Central, well, I should say Next and Final. So we started that July 24th of this year, and then we've got three phases. Basically, the gym and storm shelter is gonna be running now, and then next summer of '24 and then summer of '25 will be the next phases there. So that includes 11,000 square foot of the storm shelter and gym addition, which I'm sure you've seen some of the excavations up there now, along with 197,000 square foot of renovations to create additional classroom spaces, along with updated media center and safety and security improvements. Have completed portions of the underground utility upgrades to accommodate the new addition, as well as improvements to the existing systems. Have began backfilling the newly poured footings and foundations for the storm shelter and gym addition with pre-cast walls to follow up here in November, so you'll start to see it go vertical here pretty quick. And then additional interior renovation phases we talked about, which will be in the summer of '24 and wrap up in time for school start '25. So this one I did right before I got here, but fun fact, in this building, there's a half a mile of corridors. So if you walk every corridor, you can get your steps in. A little bit shorter played up there. And then we got some placeholders in there for the South Campus LTFM projects, as well as Sunrise.
Any questions? Ms. Thompson?
So how many blocks are in the Pyramid of Giza?
Oh man, I should have pulled the total. I didn't look at the total, I know it. I knew that was gonna be asked to right beforehand.
How many bottles of Windex does one block weigh? It's Stumpy J, I think.
Thank you. I'm just so thankful for our community for supporting the bond and all this wonderful stuff that is happening for our students. It's always fun to watch and see and get your, you know, counterpoint blade of grass, which we will need to, we'll need some kind of video of you all there counting.
Thank you. And on to the Ed Spaces Conference preview.
Sure, we just wanted to update you. There is a conference that happens every year. It's really primarily focused on furniture, and it's a national conference. And our firm goes every year to it and attends. We usually invite a client to go and present with us, and so this year we wanted to celebrate some of your projects. And so we submitted for North Star to go there. And we really wanted to talk a little bit about some of the great things that are happening here in White Bear. We think it can be inspirational for other people in the country. So we wanted to invite some of your people. So we have Dan Schmidt going and Wayne and Tim, as well as Steve Asper. That's everybody, right? Are gonna come with and be a part of the presentation. We really want you to talk a little bit about how much you're investing in students leading their own burning. I think that is a unique story. I think you're ahead of the curve nationally, for sure, at that. And then we're gonna celebrate the building a little bit. We'll give them some pictures of North Star and talk about how that building works, and a little bit about the planning process for the building. And then we're gonna have Dan talk about the prep work that went into it. So one of the things that we've seen happen in other districts, we work with a small team to develop a building that has a lot of different capabilities in it. But sometimes it's hard to launch the culture of the building and actually have it rotate root with the people there. And you're doing a phenomenal job, Dan is doing a phenomenal job. So we wanna make sure that he can talk about that a little bit with people.
Any final questions? Well, this is next week, no, a couple of weeks from now?
Couple of weeks, yeah.
Okay. And it's a, it's a national audience?
Yep.
You'll be presenting to?
Yep, it's a mix of people in the industry that supply products, again primarily furniture equipment for schools. But there is, some half of the attendance are from school districts, so a good mix of people.
That's exciting. Dr. Neumaster?
I think it's a great time to be able to show what can be done. But I'm wondering if in addition to the people that are going, you're allowed to have clips of kids working with their faces buzzed out, interviews with teachers, the people that are really in there all day and doing it.
Yeah, and we're really bringing Dan to represent that. So he does have some pictures of what's going on in the building, and we'll be talking a lot about how it actually functions and some of the things they learned by moving into the building and how people are using it now, so.
If I'm attending a conference, I really wanna see the kids at work and hear what the teachers have to say about it.
Sure.
Get some, they're too valuable to get out of the school.
Thank you very much for all of your investment and time into this work. It's phenomenal.
It's our pleasure. I've said this before, but it's really a gift to be able to work on all these projects with you guys. You're a great client and you're doing some wonderful things, and so it makes really good projects happen too. So it's been our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much. What was your question?
I think they put it on now, then it'd be on the website. Sorry, the presentation will be on the web.
Cool. All right, we'll move into our last discussion, item B3, 2024-25 course proposals. Ms. Fabbish and Principals.
Okay, Chair Ellison, members of the board, Lydia, Dr. Kazmicek, thank you for having us tonight. I have two of my colleagues here, Russ Reitz, the Unified High School Principal, and Carrie Barth, our North Campus Principal. So tonight, the three of us are gonna share new course proposals. And the first thing we wanted to do is set the stage for you and talk a little bit about what's happened up to this point. And then Russ is gonna talk a little bit about what we're doing this year with our unified staff, and then we'll move into the new course proposals. So tonight, we're continuing our long process of planning for the Unified High School. And as you may be aware, last year, a planning committee of high school staff began looking at our high school scheduling options. The committee met all year and studied the issue, surveyed students and staff, proposed options and collected feedback. Changing the high school schedule is a significant and complex process, and the committee completed their work with two recommendations. First, we will extend our implementation goal to the 2025-2026 academic school year and not next year. Secondly, we'll continue to provide more detail around a number of key themes. Relationships, instructional minutes, interventions and retakes, a process and guidelines for determining two trimester versus a year-long offering, impact on staffing and FTEs and electives, and then just the whole idea of systems change, teacher workload, stress and well-being. So tonight, we're reviewing our selection of course offerings for the 2024-2025 school year with a focus on grade level alignment, since all of our grades will be together next year, 912 in the Unified High School. We're also keeping in mind our goal of moving to a trimester schedule in the 2025-2026 school year, which will increase the number of course opportunities and elective options for our students. It's a complex puzzle that will revisit often in the coming year. So in preparation for this, we have had some curriculum writing that we are, we offered to staff over the summer to look to see how they can compact some of their either year-long courses or semester courses into a trimester. And so we, I just wanna take a moment to thank some of our art and science teachers who did some of that work this past summer to continue to help us with our learning process. So as we think about the preparation, right, the curriculum writing that will be required for a schedule change, we really are looking to continue that work and work with our teachers this year. So our focus tonight is on the 2024-2025 school year, which will have a semester schedule. So the 2025-2026 course options and timeline will be brought further at a later date to the board. So we'll continue to keep you updated throughout. So what I'd like to do first is have Russ kick us off with just the work that's been going on with our staff so far this year. Russ?
Yeah.
I'll let you.
All right.
All right.
So I'm just sharing a slide that should look somewhat familiar. I was able to come a few weeks ago and share the high school vision with you. As we turn this vision sort of into action, we're using these three questions. Do I belong here? Is this meaningful? Can I do this? And those four core values of relationships, ownership awareness and respect as the lens for how we're making many of our decisions, including new course proposals, if we're taking a course out of our current course guide, and really thinking about the student experience in terms of the opportunities and, you know, the options that our students will have for registering for courses moving forward. Our staff has learned a lot over the last week or so. We had two full professional development days. We were able to lay out the building for them. They know exactly where they'll be teaching and who's on their studio teams. They started to create some norms. And they also had discussions about who's gonna be teaching what in their content areas. And those are really important discussions to have as our two campuses unify into one. We've also spent some time on what our bell schedule will look like, how Bear Time will operate moving forward. And we put a lot of time and energy into standards-based learning, grading and reporting, which will be a really important step. And once we get our course guide approved and what that will look like moving forward for our students. So the course guide information that we're gonna share with you has been looked at over and over and over again. We've had staff discussions going back and forth, collecting more input, more information. We recently brought it to the
Systems Accountability
Systems Accountability Committee and had even more questions brought forward that we went back and got some clarification on. And so we feel really good about where we landed in terms of what courses we're thinking of adding to the guide and then what courses we possibly be removing from the guide, with lots of input and feedback. So I'm excited to share that with you tonight.
So just as Russ said and kind of really set the stage, some of the other things that we look towards as our framework, as we look at course proposals, is our World's Best Workforce goal of all students college and career ready. We think about our career pathways programming, we think about our standards, employability skills. We have our advisory committees with our CTE programming. And also, we look at equitable access. We ask all of our teachers, as they're proposing new courses or getting rid of courses, that they collect data, they do, we look for student surveys and they go through our equity decision-making protocol. And so that's just part of our standard work. And then also key considerations as we think about new courses or changes. Obviously, student interest and enrollment trends, our capacity to implement new courses, and then also looking at our facilities and scheduling. So it's a really exciting time for new courses and the alignment piece of bringing our campuses together. So we're really excited about our courses tonight that we're gonna be proposing. And we'll try to go through these as quickly as we can and pause for questions. So we'll first start with new courses. And so we have a replacement course. So as you may be aware, our 2019 science standards will be in full implementation next school year, K-12. And so what that means is we will no longer have physical science in ninth grade. It moves down to eighth grade. And so we have Earth and Space Science that will be coming to our ninth graders. And so with that change, we are proposing an integrated science title, which really gives us some flexibility with our licensure. So right now with Pell's B, teachers who licensure. So right now, with Pell's B, teachers who teach science in two areas of science are able to teach the Earth and Space Science course, or of course, if they have an Earth and Space Science licensure area. There are far and few between teachers that have that licensure currently. And so this will allow for some flexibility. We will be teaching the Earth and Space Science standards, but calling it integrated science so that we can have that opportunity to have most, all of our teachers in science teach that course. And they're pretty excited about really bringing in the Earth and Space Science standards into ninth grade. And we've had a lot of conversations with them. So I feel really good about this one, that this has been a very collaborative conversation and decision with our teachers for this course replacement for ninth grade. So it'll be a full year, and it will meet their graduation requirement for ninth grade. It'll focus on Earth and Space Science standards and that phenomena-based instruction. The second course we'd like to propose is a replacement course, and we are finding that our students who are able to take an AP course really benefit from that because they have, an AP coursework is something that's aligned to the College Board, and that is a curriculum. There's professional development for teachers, and students really get a lot. They get 140 hours of coursework that a college student would get roughly about 48 hours worth of time to learn an entire course. And so we're excited that the math teachers wanted to look at our Honors Pre-Calculus and Trigonometry course and get trained and have it be an AP course offering. So that's what we are proposing to basically replace Honors Pre-Calculus and Trigonometry to AP Pre-Calculus, which also teaches trigonometry standards in there. It was full year, and the prerequisite would be Algebra II or Honors Algebra II, and that would be opened up to grades nine through 12. Great music. Ms. Barth?
Yes. Okay, so music. We'd like to propose a Beginning Instrumental Ensemble course that would be available to ninth through 12th graders. There wouldn't be any prerequisites for this course. What this course would really do is give students who have not had any previous band or orchestra experience an on-ramp into music at the high school level. Completing this course in one semester, which would then prepare them to move into one of our formal bands or orchestras at the high school level. So it would give them an on-ramp if they have not had any previous instrumental music. It would also give students an opportunity to learn a second instrument, or third, or wherever they're at with that, so that they then, too, could have that exposure to a new instrument and join band that way as well. So that would be the Beginning Instrumental Ensemble course that we're looking at adding for next year. In addition to that, Percussion Ensemble, that would be a full-year ninth through 12th grade course. You would have to be a percussionist coming out of middle school or have that experience. And it is for all the percussionists to meet together in one class, one gathering space, so that they can work on all of their percussion instruments and music together in a very collaborative, structured course in that way. So large and small percussion ensembles would take place in that course. Another new music course, this would be an elective, would be Rock Band 101. This would be a semester-long course, open to 10th through 12th graders. There would be no prerequisites that are required for this course. So introduction to a wide variety of music and styles, and basically putting together a band for, you know, the guitar and bass and keyboards and drum sets, and, you know, getting to the point where they could put together a small gig and do some public performances near the end of it. So another music opportunity for our students, who typically, right now, if they were to do this, would have to do this on their own outside of school. So this would give them an opportunity to do that within the school setting. And once they've completed Rock Band 101, then they can just roll right into 201. So they would continue, you know, working on those band skills. And in 201, that would be a 10th through 12th grade course, and they would need to do Rock Band 101 or audition to get into Rock Band 201. And so that's what the music department will be proposing for next school year.
All right, our next course proposal is merchandising. This also has the tag of DECA. DECA is a co-curricular club. It stands for Distributed Education Clubs of America. Students put together a business plan, and they then compete against other schools on the effectiveness of that business plan. That's kind of how DECA works. So in this particular course, students that register for the merchandising course would launch our school store as part of their competitive business plan. We'd likely have three or four groups using this as their DECA competition plan. So this is a semester-long course. Students would do all of the ordering, inventorying, pricing, basically set up the entire business plan to launch the new school store that will be just outside our new main gym. So this will help prepare our students for transition from school to work or college, and for many students, it'll be their first experience, building a business plan and then implementing that plan. It also provides a great service back to our school. So that's our merchandising and DECA course. School Grounds Coffee Shop. So much like the school store, we'd like to provide a student pathway or career experience running our coffee shop. This is near the Student Commons. As you walk in the student entrance on your left side, we're currently serving our school lunch at north out of this area. But students would take an online course that would certify them in the SERVSafe, would earn them a SERVSafe Food Handler certification. And while they're earning that online certification, they would also be providing, well, they'd also be working in the coffee shop during the school day, partnering with our school lunch provider, our nutrition services programming. So we would have kitchen staff in there with our students. They'd also assist with second chance lunch, as well as à la carte during the lunch period. So the coffee shop would be open before school, throughout the school day until about 1:00 p.m. to start for this school year, and then we'll see where it would go from there. So that is School Grounds Coffee Shop. They'd earn a half a credit for completing that online course and working in the coffee shop.
So we'll pause here for questions for new courses.
Any questions?
Dr. Arcand? I have a question, and I'm going to say this again. When you look at the courses that they're proposing, but you see an opportunity for our students to engage in their areas they want to look at. I just like the idea. There's so much opportunity for them to do some career exploration, see what they want to do to gain those skills. That's just great. And I just want to commend the community that's bringing this forward. I think it's great.
Other questions?
Daniel?
I'm just awestruck. I just think it's so great. I'd love to just take all these courses. I don't know if we take the Honors Pre-Calculus, but maybe. But really, it's just so great, so much, so exciting for our community and our kids. And I hope that everybody just hears about it and appreciates all the hard work.
I have one question. I'm looking at that final course, the School Grounds Coffee Shop. For the SERVSafe, is that something that the school will pay for, then, the students to get that certification?
I guess I wasn't aware there would be a fee.
I think it's pretty reasonable. And so I think in the past, when we've had certifications in our other CTE courses, we've either found a grant to be able to pay for that or found funding so that our students don't have to pay for that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the reason I ask, my husband's in the food industry, and if the school district will allow them to take this course or this certification and pay for it, it's also good for several years. So then students who are interested in going into the industry will already have that certification and then won't have to pay for it themselves. So that struck me, like Dr. Arcand was saying, as an opportunity for students to get this sort of training and have it linger for a couple of years. So that's fantastic. Any other questions? Ms. Blunt?
Yeah, I just, I don't know how to express this the right way, but like this replacement for the Honors Pre-Calculus, making it AP Pre-Calculus.
Yep.
We're switching a lot of classes to AP, which in some ways is fine. I get it. I mean, it's a good opportunity for a lot of students to get college credit, and that's great. Sometimes, because they're supposed to be following this, the College Board curriculum, I'm not, there seems to be kind of a disconnect for some teachers between you have to follow this to the letter as opposed to students with IEDPs. It still applies within those AP classes. So when you have students in there that maybe struggle a little bit, it's a different experience for those students. And I'm not saying this right, but as we keep switching to AP, it's a big concern for me for all the different types of students that are going to want to take those classes.
So what I can say with the new schedule, looking forward with, as we look at trimesters versus semesters or full year, you know, we look to other school districts who are on trimesters. And what we found is if it's an AP or CIS course, they're looking at like a two trimester, but then there's like a full trimester that students can opt into to really help with if it's, you know, they need more extended time to learn, or they need to learn more about the test. And so we're finding that that could be an opportunity to be able to meet kids where they're at with that coursework.
Well, but if you're talking a year-long AP class, I mean, whether you've got two semesters or a trimester system, it's still the same amount of information that they have to retain a master in order to score well enough on that AP test for it to count for anything. So I know we've run into issues before with some of the history classes where it started out as a semester, then went to a year-long because none of the kids were able to pass the AP test. So that's my other concern with this is it's great for them to be able to get the college credit, but can they get the college credit? So I mean, I would like us to keep a really close eye on what percentage of the students taking it are actually getting a score high enough for this to make a difference for them. I mean, I realize they get the weighted GPA, but most schools are asking for your unweighted GPA anyway. So just some thoughts.
Thank you.
Right.
Oh, Dr. Newester.
Following up on that, these all look exciting and like a good new balancing act. We'll see how they go, but they're not all that's offered. So I'm thinking, if you've got a student that the AP push sort of class was not the class for, this new class is not the class for them either. Wouldn't have been the class for me. Math is not, I am not a math person.
But at this point, they would have to give up. If they wanted to get to calculus, they would have to take, there isn't any other option now that isn't an AP in order to get, if they wanted that extra step to get to calculus.
I'm saying, what does the math sequence look like in totality, not just these new ones? Can we skip the step here? Some people like me might have needed a more
This is the extra step for a lot of students before going into calculus.
So we do have an Algebra III course that's after Algebra II. That's just a semester course as well. So there are some other options, but I hear what you're saying. There are
But this technically comes after Algebra III. So this is one of those feeders into calculus for those kids that just want the extra before they go into calculus. So I guess that's also kind of what I'm, the concern is that it's now the feeder course is AP.
So a follow-up question to that, then. Is there a pre-calculus option that's not Honors or AP?
We have a pre-calculus with trigonometry for grades 11, 12.
So that one's not an Honors or an AP. So if students wanted to take this course but didn't want to take Honors or AP, they could do that? Is that what you're asking?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that's kind of what I was asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can clarify with the math department.
Because I don't think that there is, if this has turned into AP. Yeah, so I think there isn't a, because this was that class that we're looking for. So yeah, if you would circle back with us.
Yep.
I think you make a good point that we want to make sure that there is a pathway for all students. Yep. That the only option isn't an advanced course. Okay.
Just want to ask one more question then.
Dr. Arcand?
Because this is a Honors Pre-Calculus. So are we going to see a significant change to the rigor of the course? Because this is Honors and AP is at Honors level. So are we expecting a different change? Because they should be about the same.
Right, it should be.
So it's the addition of the ability to take a test for college credit?
And it's the College Board curriculum.
Right.
It is a little more stringent, though. I mean, it is not just Honors level when you're going through the AP because it's based off of the College Board curriculum. So it's not exactly
So Ms. Babish, yeah, you'll just come back with us.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I don't mean to
These are great questions. Thank you.
I just want to have a question on that then, too, because I was also curious about if we're moving to advanced placement course. If they take this course and they don't pass that exam, how, like, they still get a grade.
Correct.
So say they earned a B in the course, but then not passing that exam, what does that do to them if they're going, like, if a college sees that, well, you didn't pass the exam? Is that a negative against
Yeah, they won't say that. You can submit your score to that college if you so choose to. Great questions. Thank you.
But you have to take the exam in order to get the weighted grade for it, too.
Oh, okay. So grades are barriers.
All right, yes.
Moving on. Okay, so next we have course name changes or grade level change requests. And so trying to, this is very exciting, I think you'll see as well, that we're really opening up the grade levels because we are going to be a Unified High School. So that is very exciting. So you'll see for business, personal finance, business law, and accounting, we'll open it up from 11th and 12th grade to 10th through 12th grade. And then we do have offer other business courses, and the team really felt that the entrepreneurship is really the focus of that course. So just wanting to call it what it is, entrepreneurship. So those are the proposed changes for business. For art, again, you'll hopefully be glad to see that we're really opening it up to our students from 11th and 12th grade through ninth through 12th grade. For most of the, most all courses, you'll see that media, art, and design, the team, the art team would like to move that just to, I think it's just going to be design because we are requesting to drop design, too. So it would just be design. So I'll make an update for that for the next board meeting. But the idea was that students were thinking this was a lot of digital art, and they're really wanting to explore more really wanting to explore more mediums than just digital art. So they just, they thought if we just call it design, that really opens it up. So they'll still be covering the media art standards and design standards, but just kind of make it a little bit more broad. And then our senior studio art, really, we have drawing and painting one and two. So instead, opening it up for really advanced opportunity for grades ten through twelve for drawing and painting. So those are the changes proposed for art. Orchestra. So, you can see, try to do it in a way where you could see kind of the current course offerings and then again, opening it up. So orchestra nine and ten right now is over at North Campus, proposing for next year that we'd have a ninth grade concert orchestra and then a tenth grade varsity orchestra. But then we still would have that opportunity for students who'd want to do the beginning instrumental ensemble. And then for tenth grade, really, after you've done concert orchestra or beginning instrumental ensemble, you'll have an opportunity to be in bear orchestra, philharmonic orchestra as well. And that's where it gets to be a little bit more advanced, where students would audition for those different orchestras. And then we have intro to music theory and AP music theory, again, opening those up for more grade levels for students to have that opportunity. And then we have choir. Choir nine, ten right now and looking to have a ninth grade choir for all soprano and alto students called North Notes. And then a all tenor and bass choir called Voyagers for grades nine through twelve. And then looking at choraleers and mariner, being able to open that up, tenth through twelfth grade. So choraleers being soprano and alto and then mariner being soprano, alto, tenor or bass. And that would be based on an audition for grades ten through twelve. And then finally, band. Band nine, ten would then be, ninth grade would be concert band. And then again, students could either do the beginning instrumental ensemble or the percussion ensemble. And then in grades ten through twelve, the intermediate band is symphonic band and then the advanced band is that wind ensemble. And then, don't forget, we didn't put it in here, but then the rock band 101 and rock band 201.
We have Jack Black coming in.
All right, family consumer science changes. Again, you're going to see it opening up to more grade levels, which is really exciting. The fourth one down, food and society, the team really felt that we want to be a little bit more descriptive and kind of with the times, so calling it culture and cuisine. And culinary essentials, opening that up. And then early childhood education, this is a course where students interact with our preschool students. And so students take time out of their school day to go and interact with our early childhood students. And so, just with transportation and scheduling, the team really felt like grade twelve was the most appropriate because kids would be, you know, have a release time to go work with the early childhood students. Social studies, you'll again see that really opening it up. One of the things that we found, students were feeling that psychology one and then the sequence course was psychology two and that's not really the case. The kids can take them in either order. And so changing the name to foundational and then applied, the team felt that that was a little bit more descriptive and then kids, you know, they could take them in either order. It didn't have to be one and then two. So that's why that changes there. Debate one would just be become debate. And then you'll see also the grade level opening up for sociology, philosophy, modern world events, and then the European history AP. Tech ed and career and technical education, you'll see again, opening it up to more grade levels throughout, same names for all of those courses, just opening it up to more grade levels. This is where working with our CTE teachers to really help, help students understand what the course is about. And so, wanting to do a little better job of really giving kids the opportunity upfront to see this is what this course is all about. And so making some course changes, the titles for construction trades, intro to woodworking, material fabrication and welding. I know the teachers are really excited about this and I think the students are too, if you think back to your welding experience in high school. So, they really felt like it was important to include that in the title. And then also with the computer-aided design, the CAD and digital manufacturing, they really felt that that was important to be in the title as well. And you'll see the career and technical education has done a really great job of creating frameworks and looking at industry for guidance. And so, we hope that these titles, they also do align with that as well. So we feel really good about those course title changes. And then finally, graphic arts, two with advanced digital photography, it felt like it was a more advanced course, but still opening it up to all students, ninth, twelve. I'm going to let Russ do this next one.
So, currently at our North Campus, ninth grade health and PE is an every-other-day model, so they're doing PE on a Monday, then they go to health Tuesday and they follow that pattern. And we're not doing that with our eleventh and twelfth graders at South Campus. So as we unify, we knew we needed to make some changes initially. We're also anticipating a trimester move and so we tried to prepare for that now, which will give us a little bit of flexibility if we were to move to trimester. So, what you're seeing here is we would offer PE in grade nine for a semester under a trimester model, that might look like one trimester instead of a semester. And then they're going to get their tenth grade, their health experience in tenth grade right now as a semester. And then eleventh, twelfth, they'd have the option to choose one or the other, health or PE. Because of the possible transition, we wanted to err on the side of getting more health. And so, this year's current ninth graders are receiving health and PE for a quarter each. They'll get a full semester of health as a tenth grader and then they'll go right into that one or the other as eleventh and twelfth. As opposed to being at a deficit if we were to move to trimesters and then trying to scramble to provide more opportunity for our kids to complete our graduations requirements. So that's the basics behind our changes in PE and health.
We'll pause there if there's any questions.
Any questions?
Okay. Okay, then finally, we have our request to remove courses. And so, one of the things that we look at is, when does the course run last? When have we had enough student enrollment to be able to run the courses? Because if not, that's telling us something and is there a way to remove those so we can offer up some opportunity for some new courses? So you see in social studies, we have four courses that we're looking to remove and we haven't had enough student enrollment to run them in three or more years. As you may remember, we did offer some, and we do offer some new social studies courses with our ethnic studies, US history and ethnic studies, world history. So we're excited about that. So unfortunately, some of the CIS and honors courses haven't run in many years and so we're looking to propose to remove those.
Ms. Boyd?
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the United States of America, the American experiment.
Yes.
That, was that the year-long that you had to take the entire year?
Yes, with the language arts.
That's why no one was taking it.
Yes, yes.
Because there was another option that broke.
Yes, it was a great interdisciplinary opportunity, but it was, yeah, really difficult for the schedule.
Yep.
Okay, orchestra. We are proposing to have Bear's Orchestra for grades ten through twelve, so we no longer need south strings. So we're looking to move that. And then two PE courses, World of Dance and Renaissance Performance. Those courses haven't run in the past ten years, which is unfortunate and, but we're looking to offer some new courses at the Unified High School, so excited about that. And then finally, family consumer science. We have a course, Exceptional Child, that really looks and studies the students with disabilities. And that course hasn't run for over six years. So what we're looking to do is, we're proposing to remove it, but we're keeping an eye on it with our education pathway. We know as we think about coursework for upcoming educators, that working with students with disabilities and students who have IEPs is a really important part of that pathway. And so, this is going away because it hasn't run, but we're looking to try to find a course, a similar course that we could add back as we look at our, growing our education pathway and what courses students may need to be an educator and work with students with disabilities. All right, that's it.
That is a lot. All right, any questions for the? Right, this is a lot of moving parts. So I appreciate all the work and thought that goes into this. It's really exciting.
Yeah, thank you for all your questions.
Great, thank you. All right, and now I would call for a motion to adjourn.
Hi, I'm in front of adjournment.
Dr. Arcand has a motion and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Boyd. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
And we are adjourned.